Too ballin'. We've smoked testing regular council. I got it. Got it?
Okay, why don't we see everybody?
I'm on my MacBook. Am I coming through okay, Daniel?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
I've got David with me because he can't get on by computer, so he's here with me.
A lot of people.
Because he's gonna say something and I'm gonna be cracking up.
Right?
Everyone, as you come in, please type your name. If you're on your computer, please type your name in the comment box.
I don't know how to do that.
Um, do you want me to add the people that are here at the house?
Yes, please.
So is it, is it in invite? Is that what it is?
You should have a chat button at the bottom.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Eight people on it right now. 29:30.
Everyone joining, just joining us, please type your name in the comment box if you would, so we have you on the record here.
No.
Didn't work?
See, there's not much to see right now.
Well, now Halli just gone on.
Everyone just joining us, please type your name in the comment box if you would.
Rennie.
Rennie, if you could type it in the box, there should be, you click the comment button and just type your name, please. And also, everyone, please mute yourselves.
It's 5:15. Is everyone here, Daniel?
Is Tara here? Tara Brooks. And Mark is joining us right now. I don't see Tara.
Okay, well, 5:15, let's call this special meeting of the city council to order. I just want to talk about a few little ground rules for this evening, and I hope the council will agree with me. There are a lot of people here tonight who I know would like to speak. And so in order to give them all an opportunity to do so, try to limit your comments to at least three minutes. Let's keep it brief and allow everyone to speak. A lot of people who are here are scheduled to join the exploratory meeting at 30. We have some feedback. So they'll be running at 6:30, so I'd like us to open things up for about 45 minutes or so. And then the council can have any discussion they choose to have. How does that sound to everyone?
Sounds good.
Good.
Okay, great. So I'm actually going to start this meeting with a, I apologize, prepared statement. And then the city manager would like to say a few words and we'll open it up to discussion. If I may. The national discussion that began with the murder of George Floyd has crept into every corner of our nation, including the city of Virgens. Cities and towns across the country are examining policing with increased scrutiny in an attempt to include all voices. And in answer to calls from our residents, the city council unanimously agreed to form an exploratory committee to determine: One, is a board of citizen engagement to examine our police department necessary? And two, if so, what would that look like? This was meant in no way to undermine our police department or our city manager's role in supervising our department. The purpose, as I see it, is to provide a forum for citizen engagement and an opportunity for public input. I will say again, this is not an indictment of our force. In fact, I would encourage everyone to consider law enforcement practices and policies more deeply and beyond our own police department. Should we also not consider and call for more public input more broadly in our county and in our state law enforcement agencies? The answer is yes. The members of our police force deserve our respect. Their lives are more at risk each day than most of us can even comprehend. They are fine people who have a right to perform their duties in the best environment possible, and I fully support them. It would be my wish that an advisory committee would work closely with our city manager and our chief to build on the exceptional work the chief and his force have already done. That is my opinion of our department. After discussion at this past Tuesday's city council meeting, I found myself wondering why are there two sides to this issue? Which seems very much like just an opportunity to me. Why are we throwing obstacles up in front of providing a platform for everyone's voice to be heard? While I am unaware of any official complaints of intimidation, I do know that many people find themselves intimidated by police and not simply because they're doing something wrong. There should be no reason to feel intimidated by those who choose to serve and protect us. I know our chief to be reasonable and approachable, but not everyone feels that way. The same is true of every law enforcement agency. And this is a problem we have the power to solve here in Virgens. These are difficult, even painful conversations to have. City managers to be thanked for calling this meeting to bring these topics out of the darkness. The best way to support our police is to work with them, not against them. And everyone seeking change should make that commitment. I do here and now. There is no agenda item other than discussion for this meeting. I implore everyone to be respectful and civil. There are no accusations here, and I have no personal agenda other than every voice being heard. If I have a side in this conversation, it would be what is best for Virgens. We have asked a group of individuals to help answer that question, and we need to allow them to do their work. Thank you. Major Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the one agenda item is discussion regarding accusations that the Virgens Police Department is demoralizing and intimidating people. I just want to start off by bringing your attention to a couple of things. First, this email that I sent to the city council. Chief Merkel and myself have gone out of our way to ensure that there is an outlet for complaints against the police department because we take them with the utmost seriousness. We've utilized the new website. And we created a new form in conjunction with the new website, and I'll pull up the form that we created. That email was sent to the city council three weeks ago, along with a detailed contact complaint form that outlines how a complaint shall be submitted to myself or the chief of police. As you can see, we want details regarding the complaint so we can address any complaint. Yesterday, about seven in the morning, I received a complaint via text message from the mayor stating that our police department is demoralizing, a generalized statement that the police department is demoralizing and intimidating people. This is very concerning to me. This is very concerning to the chief of police. But we can only address a specific complaint. That's why we created this complaint form that we gave you three weeks ago. So instead, I received a text message about the police intimidating, demoralizing people. A text message. That's why we're here today.
You received a text message from Fritz?
Sixty people are listening.
Saying that from the first.
Can you bring the text messages up, please?
Put it up on the screen.
Jeff just literally took a drink of iced tea.
I want to read the text messages. "Watch me pack the house on August 11th. I will not be humiliated like I was last year at the budget meeting. Honestly, citizens are intimidated by our police, and the citizen group can change that." By the way, love the Trump 2020 banner. And so that was interesting. This is me talking. Who was that? You know, no clue. "If people are intimidated by Chief Merkel and our police, that's really unfortunate." "Well, they are," says the mayor. "Someday off the clock, we should chat," says the mayor. I think we, and I said, I think we should discuss people feeling intimidated by our police at the next council meeting because that's a real problem. He says that it is. I don't give two shits about their morale. They've been demoralizing citizens long enough. I'm so appreciate, I so appreciate Andy's comments reminding us, who chiefs have resigned in the last 25 years. That's a really, that's really serious, I said, and we need to deal with this immediately, though. And if LJD, which is Lynn Jackson-Donnelly, does not simmer down, I'm taking her to the woodshed, along with G.A., who is Dave Austin. If there is people that feel intimidated and/or demoralized, this is an imminent problem that needs to be dealt with immediately. It is incumbent on the council to speak for citizens. We need to have an emergency meeting tonight. I couldn't do tonight. I also think it's appropriate for a regular meeting. This needs to be, I said, this needs to be addressed immediately. I will email the whole council to coordinate a meeting immediately, as soon as possible. And later, later in the day, I received this gif that says, honey, you've got a big storm coming. I asked, is that a threat? And I received a laughing gif, and I took that as a yes, and I said, nice. And he said, hardly. Lynn Jackson-Donnelly has pissed a lot of folks off. So that's, that's directed at Lynn and not me, because that sure seems like it was directed at me. And he says, not at all. Aren't you glad you're taking Friday off? He says, I don't think we should be threatening. I said, I don't think we should be threatening anyone, myself or Lynn. Honey, you've got a big storm coming. That's not cool. Oh heavens, apologies. It's been a rough day. I was trying to be humorous, forgive me. I don't think it's time for jokes, I said. How else was I supposed to take that? Thanks for the apology. I'll try to be more sensitive, the mayor said. Thanks for checking me on that. That's the end of it.
So I have a letter of response that I'd like to give since I'm the one being targeted, along with David. If you would put up my letter, please. "When you and Andrew bought your beautiful home, you were welcomed with open arms, and we all watched as you both brought your new home into new life. You quickly joined many organizations and became emerged in the committee, in the community. However, your position as mayor has been grossly abused. Your position as head of the council is to lead our public meetings and other duties that are voted by the council. These are the only duties, nothing more, nothing less. You presented yourself to Julie Basel, the director of the Virgens Partnership, in your position as mayor and told her publicly that she would never have been chosen if it was up to you. It is not your place to comment at all. The Virgens Partnership is not a city-controlled committee. It also shows your true disrespect for her and women in general. I legally bore a floor and council meeting in a continued badgering of Chief Merkel. You were asked if you were to express your concerns to the chief directly. And you answered twice that you, that the two of you had talked. It was later discovered that was not, was an outright lie. In your words, you misspoke. Really? You would forget that detail? You continue to correspond with the sheriff despite the complaint that the sheriff department has filed against the city. You have been instructed many times by the council and the manager to cease and desist, but you continue to have your secret conversations. The police oversight committee was not a decision made by the council, but by you alone, with members that you hand chose, were hand chosen by you. There was no invitation to the public to submit their names to be considered. You hoped to continue with your secret meetings until you were cornered by the public. Only then did you go to the council. This is an especially important committee that should be able to make their recommendations without your input or guidance. You alone are responsible for the new police union. The city prides itself in having open communications with all of our departments. That community has now been stifled by you. History will prove that change forever are direct contact with our officers. We have the best police department that exists today. What storm are you hoping to bring to our city? You alone, again, are dividing the city. Black Lives Matter, and we support our local police, should be going hand in hand. The ultimate bullying comes again directly from you, Mr. Mayor. You threaten the city manager, David Austin, and even more directly to me, is an outrage. This will not stop me for having my opinion and expressing them in the future. You are coming from a place I do not understand, I never will. If this sitting council accepts this conduct from the mayor, then shame on all of you. If you push me to this, you have pushed me to this statement, and all of this is true and can be proven. So I suggest strongly that you examine your real intentions and step down as mayor immediately.
I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a statement. I just prefer to speak right off the top of my head. Jeff, you're gonna take me to the woodshed? Who do you think you are? You take me to the woodshed? You can take Lynn and I to the woodshed? You're mayor of a city of 2,800 people. You don't own this city, and you don't run it either. Daniel runs it. You can take me to the woodshed? Because you and I disagree about the importance of all public viewpoints being heard? Maybe that's it? Or is it because, I can't believe this, because you, I believe that the morale of city departments is important and you don't give two shits about it? You read a statement condemning intimidation, and that's exactly what you're trying to do here? I'm gonna tell you, it won't work with me. I don't think it's gonna work with Lynn either. Probably not gonna work with many other people in this city. You stated you want a platform for all voices to be heard? You only want the voices that agree with you to be heard? You're like a kid that didn't get his own way. I don't even know what the hell to say about this, but you want to take me to the woodshed? See how that works?
Anyone else? Council members? Any further input from?
Time to talk, and then if there's anything at the end, I can wrap up.
Well, we could, we could probably end this discussion pretty quickly if the council is in agreement that I should resign.
I'll call for the vote.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion from the council? Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, the motion carries. Thank you all. I'm actually going to exit the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did the right thing.
Do we want to continue this meeting, or now that Lynn is mayor, do we want to reconvene and kind of figure out what's next?
Let's continue the meeting.
And I did not say this to become mayor.
I'm not, I'm not, I just mean you're next, so that's, that's that's why we put in a deputy mayor for this reason, so we are, we are following protocol. I just didn't know if you wanted to continue this meeting or whether we should.
I'd be happy to listen to anyone that anything has to say. I said that from day one, day one. Anybody from Virgens that'd like to comment, please come forward. But please, no threats, no accusations unless you can prove them. Sorry, I'm not used to this, so.
Brian, have we got, yeah, Brian, Matt, then Abigail.
Okay, we'll take Brian first, whoever Brian is.
Hi, this is, this is Brian Getkowski here. Sorry, my video is being weird. Um, so I'm just trying to limit my comments to what this agenda meeting was for, was about the complaint. And then I guess I will go with a quick comment. And the questions can be answered after I make my comment, but I'm just wondering, was this just a general? Somebody said, like, I don't like the police department, they're mean, or is there a specific complaint that's been made today? And I was also wondering, it was mentioned that complaints from the sheriff's department, I was wondering what that was. Because this, this is the first I've heard of it.
Okay, so.
And I'm speaking on the and speaking on the, the issue of the appointed committee. I'm a member of that committee. I am speaking today as a citizen of Virgens. Completely separate to my involvement with this committee. So these are my, my voices, nothing to do with committee, I want to make sure that's clear. But the issue of how this committee was started and what we're doing has been discussed at nauseam. I don't know. I believe that's been put to bed. The problem has been fixed. The error, it's been fixed. We're doing it right. So let's move on from that. About the complaint form that's on the police department website, unless accessing it has changed in the past week or two. So I looked at it, it wasn't easy to find. And that's going directly to the police department. That's, that's, you know, if you're making a complaint against the police department, that's not a friendly way to do it, that's not a comfortable way to do it, and table that. I want to make it clear that I love this city. I came here as a student at the Job Corps 24 years ago and this city saved my life. That's why I chose to move back here 20 years ago. And you've seen this discord in the, in the city council is really heartbreaking to me. I've just been recently getting involved in this, so I hope, I hope this is new, I hope it can be put to bed soon. But with the city council and just what's going on all over the country right now, I don't care where you're from, what you've been through. Everybody's different. But if you reach out and embrace and love and compassion, you will find that we all have more in common. And that can unite us than what divides us. And that's what needs to be focused on. Especially when it comes to the police department. I support our police. Anything that can make that better is a good thing. So again, just if we can embrace and compassion and friendship and look at what unites us, what we have in common, what makes this city great, this tiny little city is one of the greatest places in the world. And we can get through this and we'll be better off at the end of it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Brian. I appreciate your comments and I've enjoyed listening to what you have for comments on the, the committee that you're on. I hope that this meeting tonight will end the discord and we're all going to be working together from now on. I cannot comment on the sheriff's department, but it will be at some point something that we can put publicly. But you must understand, it's right now, it's, it's in, it's, it's I don't know what I want to say, what the word would be, but, but it's something we can't disclose at this moment. And hopefully you'll respect that until we can say more.
Just, is that towards, a complaint towards the city or complaint towards the police department, or is that can't even be said yet?
I'd rather not say, because I don't want to involve anybody at this point. Thank you.
Okay. And then, and then the complaint that prompted this meeting of the intimidation, is that a specific complaint or just a general statement?
I cannot comment on that, only that it was Jeff Fritz that brought it forward. You heard his email or his text to I have no idea where, what, or what brought that on. I have no idea, but he is the one that requested the meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's, I'll leave that there. Thank you.
Abigail, Zoe, Rebecca.
Abigail?
Hi, just coming off of mirror. Thank you so much for providing me the opportunity to speak. I wanted to talk about a couple of things. First and foremost, I wanted to highlight that the establishment of this committee was not a one-sided agenda or operation. I was there at the city council meeting, we're establishing the committee was unanimously approved. So I do want to keep that in mind. This is something that all council members wanted to move forward on. Second, I did attend an open meeting of this group. I found that they were committed, intelligent, hardworking individuals that are volunteering to bring their best skills forward in order to find a good solution that we can all discuss. And I really don't think that the first meeting not being open to the public was any ill will. I know that was brought up to discussion, but David, I'm not sure if you were there in that first easily accessible open meeting, but that is definitely not the sense that I got while participating and I felt like they were very engaging and willing to listen. And for, I think this group has been politicized from all angles, not just one. So I think with your Lynn, your commitment to move forward for this good work to happen, we should keep that in mind as well. And by doing so, I think it's extremely important, we give this group of people the time they need to come up with a successful solution. And cutting that short is going to be not only detrimental to the work they're putting forward and quite frankly unfair to these great citizens that stepped up to the task, but would not do well by our citizens. So that's all I wanted to say. I mostly wanted to make sure that we recognize the importance of the group and we don't undermine this group. And thank you again for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Abigail, and you can believe that that is going to happen. And the last thing we need right now is to undermine any good work that's going on. So thank you very much. I'm sorry, I forgot who's next.
Zoe, Zoe Castle.
Hi, yeah, thank you so much, Lynn, for having this space. I think it's really important that we continue to engage with this, this question in our community. And I will say, I think in the last three or four months or however long, I think despite what this moment is, I've felt more connected and more rooted to Virgin's than I've ever felt. It's very clear that folks here really care about what our community looks like and that means a lot to me. I mostly just want to, I think, kind of reiterate what Abby said, you know, I think that this work that hopefully this committee can do is not something that can happen in a month in terms of figuring out what, what a, you know, civilian review board would look like. I think it's going to take time and hard conversations. And so I just hope that the group has enough time to feel really confident about what they then present to the larger community and that they're also acknowledged for their volunteer time and effort in making this happen. So I just want to voice my support for the civilian review board and my support for giving them an extension and for honoring the work that they're doing. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Zoe. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yeah, Rebecca and then David Small, Rebecca Wright, David Small.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. So I actually wrote this. So some of it might not be relevant anymore, but I will continue. I support the idea of a citizen review board. This review board is a volunteer group asking to have a chance to hold our police force accountable. I'm surprised our police force is not excited to have this collaboration, which by all accounts stated by those against it should only serve to highlight the exemplary job our police force is doing. And by implementing this community involvement would set the tone for the future of the force as members come and go. Of one that holds the highest standards of serving the people, creating a legacy those currently employed in the force would be honored to point to. The resistance I'm hearing stems from one of two things. The police force is hiding something or the opponents of this review board are opposed to change. I'm going to assume it's a resistance to change. I'd like to offer those who might benefit a reminder, change is a part of life. At its most fundamental example, either species adapt and change or they die. We are subject to these laws of nature and so is our beloved little city. We must change and grow constantly, and this is one change asked for by a group of very thoughtful people that serves to only improve relations with our police force and provide a bridge to the rest of the community and a show of full transparency and a commitment to truly serving the people. Make no mistake, for those who resist change at every turn, you are ensuring the demise of Virgin's. Citing historic precedents or the that's the way we've always done it argument in the face of new and of a new environment is like saying we should be building more homes on the shorelines because that's what we've always done, ignoring the impending rising waters. I end by reminding everyone, this is a volunteer effort in a city led by mostly volunteers, modest stipends aside, asking for well-paid public servants to be fully transparent. Public servants that consume nearly 40% of our city budget currently. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Rebecca. Just will say, I hope that we're going to have a nicer, kinder establishment now. So I want you to know, I am in favor of continuing this committee. I don't want anyone to think I'm not. And there's always room for change as long as it's not confrontational. So I think the next one up is.
Dave Small and then Niall.
Dave, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. I just, you know, civil service is a really hard job. Doesn't matter if you fall on the elected official role or you are working in our government, it's a really hard job. And it's not for the weak of heart. When you work in civil service, you put yourself in the public spotlight and you are frankly open to criticism at all times and you are guaranteed to get criticism regardless of what you do. Policing is one of the toughest jobs out there. I believe our officers are strong and able professionals. I keep hearing this discussion about a review board, you know, more discussion about policing in Virgin's to be hurting their feelings, lowering morale. And I've heard this for a number of years and I frankly think that this infantilizes our officers. They didn't get into this line of work because it was going to be an easy job or because they didn't think they would face criticism. They went in knowing that it was going to be harder and they probably went in because it's a hard job, because that's the type of folks they are. I don't believe that setting up a committee to investigate whether or not we should have a review board, it's a committee to talk about potentially having a committee is meant to inherently criticize their performance and certainly is not meant to hurt any feelings or lower morale. But rather, this is an opportunity to investigate more collaboration between our police and the citizens whom they serve. So I just want to reiterate my support for the committee investigating a potential review board for the city of Virgin's. And I look forward to supporting their findings because I know that they are dedicated volunteers who are not doing this for the glory. They're doing this because they love the city. And if they feel they need a few more days to do a great job and report back to all of us whom they're serving, then I think we should listen to them and I fully hope that the council would support that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up?
Niall?
Yeah, I just, I feel like I need to address the elephant in the room. That I think there's 70 participants here, a lot of us within a day and a half of notice. And a lot of us came here under the impression that we were going to have a conversation about policing. You know, I serve in this group and of course my comments here, just like Brian said, my comments here are not representative of the exploratory committee, they're certainly just mine. But before we get to talking about the business of the group itself, I am thoroughly embarrassed, I'll be honest, I'm thoroughly embarrassed for the city today that, that, that we had to, we were invited under the pretext of, of, you know, I've been a part of this conversation around policing from the start, as many of you know. The, the invitation, the sort of title for the, for the group was confusing to everyone, I'm sure, in the exploratory committee because there has been no conversation about a consistent or imminent level of intimidation coming from the police department. That is not an issue that we have been talking about. I feel like that and then bringing us in on the pretext of that to see what was, again, a really embarrassing, like coordinated coup, really, in city council. That was, that was, that's not, not even something I expected to be seen, forget Virgin's, it's 2,500 people. So I just need to, I need to state that and to go through that in such a coordinated way, and I'll get to some of the points that were talked about. And of course, you know, I know Jeff, as I know many of you who serve on city council. It's a privilege to live in a small place where we, you know, get to know our representatives in a small and a big way. I've had conversations with, with Lynn and with, with with David Austin, which left, left me feeling like I really respected them. When we were talking about the non-citizen voting stuff, I'm sure you'll remember that as well. That is the Virgin's that I know, not this. And, and to think that that politicization, politicization, to go through watching that and to pivot to saying that that this is not, I'm not trying to politicize the issue, I'm not trying to sort of talk about that while putting Jeff's, I'm sure it was meant to be private texts, we'll get into the conversation, I'm sure, at some point about what goes in between the city manager and the, and the and the, and the mayor, whether it's private or not, that's, I don't really care, to be honest, what's done is done.
I just, I don't want to interrupt what you have to say, but I want to clarify, I want to clarify two things.
I would like to finish, thank you. That, you know, we'll, we'll get to that. I'm sure, I'm actually not as interested in talking about the ins and outs of what just happened, outside of the fact that it was incredibly embarrassing. And what it does is further, nothing else but further politicize this conversation, as so many of the speakers already today have said. This need not be a politicized conversation. The police department need not be the victim of this conversation unless they choose to be the victim of this conversation. I have many other thoughts. I know Lynn wanted to speak. I'm sorry that I didn't let you interject. I just had a chain of thought I wanted to complete.
No, I perfectly respect that. I just want to make a couple of things clear. We, as a council or the manager, did not request this meeting. It came from Mayor Fritz and his words were directly that the, the police were intimidating and demoralizing. Those were his words. That is why the agenda used those words, those were her, his words. Also, I want to know, let me finish, let me finish. And all of the, all of the texts, any emails, any letters, anything that goes into the city is public record. So I don't know if there shouldn't be anything secret or private that goes into this meeting. And that is part of the problem. So those texts were public information and that's why they were shared.
I apologize. I made you stop interjecting me and I did the exact same thing back. I'm sorry for that.
No problem.
And to, and to, and to that point, you know, again, I don't, I don't need to get into the back and forth about, about that. Obviously, what Jeff said crossed the line and there's no doubt of that. But what I care about is the impact of that on our conversation here today and about the ability of this group to do our work. And I think that has been tarnished, incredibly tarnished because of this dog and pony show.
Oh boy.
For now, that's all I have to say.
I feel very regretful that you think this was a dog and pony show. This was done, this was very hurtful to us. And I don't want to belabor this, but you're going to find that this committee can work with their hands untied now. And there's not going to be anybody looking over your shoulders or guiding you through what you have to do. This work is yours, your charge is, you know what the charge is and it's up to you to do it. So I'll take the next question or the next comment.
Matt?
Daniel, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I have a quick question. I just want to redirect this. As an earlier statement was made that there's 70 people in this meeting on short notice and that's not a normal thing. Daniel, can you tell me the percentage of due tax revenue that's been collected from the first quarter and second quarter this year compared to what is due?
For, for, we just sent out tax bills, but last quarter, it was about 90, it was like 93%.
90, 93%?
Yeah.
I just want everybody to understand we need to realize the governor, government that governs best governs least. We should be looking at ways to reduce resources, both human resources and financial resources at every turn. We have 40 and 50 million Americans out of work around this country. We have lockdowns that are destroying small businesses. We have people who can't pay their property taxes. And this should not be occupying our time. We have to run the city, we have to run it with less, we have to work together more. And divisiveness of creating problems where they don't exist is not helpful. And let me just say this. I'm sorry about the dog. If God did not exist, it would be necessary to create him. And what happens with committees and government agencies is once you get the TSA, they're feeling up your children forever. So beware of these kinds of committees. And what does it do? It creates a necessary It creates a necessary image to perpetuate itself into the future and if there's not a problem, they will create one because everyone has a different view. And when you have these kinds of things and you start delegating beyond in a little town 2,500 down to new committees, there's not a lot to run here. You got one city manager, a couple of clerks and a city council. Be careful what you wish for with more government. And for those of you that don't know me, my name's Matt White, I'm a native, I grew up in Virgens and I'm a part-time resident as well and I love all you guys and I'm glad to participate and I'm sorry that it's come to this, but I think the best result has happened tonight and hopefully Mr. Fritz can learn from the deep well of tolerance in history in Virgens that goes back to pre-revolutionary times of people living and letting live, helping their neighbors and taking care of themselves, that's what we do best. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next?
Sarah Strop.
Hi, Sarah.
Hi Lynn, hi everybody. In case you don't know me, my name is Sarah Strop, I live on Green Street, I'm a professor at Middlebury College and I serve on our faculty council in a governance role in an institution that I care about. My husband is the chair of the school board and I think about governance a lot and I want to say that the first 15 minutes of this meeting simply blew my mind. If this were the first city council meeting that I'd ever been to, I would be demoralized, frustrated and never come to another city council meeting again. And this saddens me a lot because I look around our city council and I see not just people that I trust, but friends. Lynn helped us buy our home. Friends on city council have supported the work that I care about with other community organizations. These are public servants that I trust. I do think that our local government functions best when we have a healthy deliberation among different perspectives, but that is not what happened at the beginning of this meeting. I don't know what it means to move forward from this. I know that this is an incredibly stressful time and that public service is a service that people choose to do incredibly taxing, but I hope at the very least that the city council will revisit its communication protocol because I believe that what happened could have been done privately. Please do not say things in texts or emails that you would not share publicly. Please do not share publicly things that are sent privately. Please do not make our city council meetings a place to air personal divisions. And most importantly for this meeting, please do not let these interpersonal divisions derail the critical work that our city council has to do. I know that everybody in this room is managing what might be unprecedented levels of stress. That is in part because the challenges that we face are so immense. We are thinking about the fundamental health of our community, we are thinking about the safety of our community. Please allow the advisory committee who we have heard from in public meetings, who I've been impressed with as they talk about their own perspectives, please allow that committee to do their job. As I understand their job, it is not to feed hostility with the police department, it is actually to improve relations between us and the citizens that they protect. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Next?
Jeremy Holm.
Jeremy?
Hey, everybody. Thank you for hearing my comments, I want to thank everybody who's made comments. As I look at my screen and I see everybody, I see a lot of people who all have implicit race bias. Hundreds of years ago, slave owners would take their slaves to the woodshed and punish them. And the use of that terminology is just an example, that that kind of racial tone is maybe not intended, but it's there, it's in us all. All of us who are white have an internal racial bias and that is what this conversation should be about. Chief Mike Chitwood, who's a police officer in Florida, brought down the police involved shooting rate by 90% and he did it with a 10-point plan. The first point was to let his officers learn about the history of slavery. That is something that I have asked Chief Merkel to work on and I've worked with Chief Merkel, he helped me do the help program and teach kids about opioids and addiction. There's not one person, including you, David, on this committee who doesn't care about and love Virgens, we all do. A false choice exists between Black Lives Matter and we support our police, both things can be true. And what happened earlier, I understand that there are differing points of view, but it broke my heart because Jeff is a friend of mine and so obviously I have a biased view about him, but I do know that he worked hard for the city and I understand there are differences. I hope we can find a way to get beyond those differences and to have a real conversation about what Virgens can be in the coming years. We have huge hurdles to overcome right now, we have deficits, we have businesses, we have COVID to deal with, we have this race war that's happening in America and if we tackle it now, just like Vermont has tackled COVID, we won't end up with the problems that we see in other small towns. The last thing I want to say is it's very clear that everyone here who's present on these virtual, in this virtual meeting loves our town and cares about it. And I know that things I've just said may piss a couple people off, please forgive me, know that I have an open mind and an open heart and I was just saying what I felt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Lynn.
Next?
Catherine Brooks.
Hi Catherine, are you there? I'll see you. Catherine?
You're muted, Catherine. Got it, sorry about that. I have a lot to say and I'll try to be as quick about it as I can. This meeting was called about the committee and that's the first thing I'd like to comment on and I'm speaking as an individual. The reason why I joined the committee is not because of my love for Virgens, it's because I've been intimidated by people in town government and by city employees. I don't want other people to have the experiences I've had. I had a lovely one-hour meeting today with Chief Merkel and I shared with him a three to four-year history. I believe that we need to have some sort of advocacy group in our town so that people who have minority views, alternative views can state them and can be honored for their opinion and that they have their opinion dealt with. I was very alarmed and remain alarmed about the Driving While Black and Brown report. Whether it's right or wrong, Lynn, I know you have said it's all wrong, but you know, whatever. I was very concerned and I spoke up, I stayed quiet about it for a year and I did that because I didn't want any bad press coming to this town where people work so hard to make it go. So I stuffed what I believed in on behalf of the town. Later, at a town meeting, someone did speak up about it and I thought I need to support this person, so I stood up and supported it. The then mayor singled me out, threw it back in my face and said, well, why don't you do the study and find out what's wrong with it? I'm just going to try to go quick on this, so that was that experience. Another experience, I had issues with how emails were being, town announcements were being signed off with and I emailed the then city manager and said, do you think maybe city communications, do they have to be signed off with God bless you? I'm a Christian, my brother-in-law is a fantastic minister, but I was thinking about the people for whom God bless you alienates them, I was thinking of my fellow citizens. I got a kind of snippy email back from the town manager asking about me wanting to change the town handbook or something and I let it drop, Mel Holly's a nice guy, I let it drop. But, so, okay, fast forward, the more recent thing, I've told you enough, there were other incidents and I shared other things with Chief Merkel, as I said, we had a good time, but I, a 20-year resident of Virgens, have not felt comfortable in the way I have been treated when I have come forward. I don't like seeing a city council member with a vitriol on his or her face talking about what I'm doing to volunteer for this committee. And that's what I, as a member of this committee, have experienced. The accusation that we've been, I don't know, I have no idea what other committee members have been done, Jeff Friss invited me to be on this and he went blank, that was the last I heard from him. I have been completely on my own what I've been doing, there has been no direction from him, I have been asked to give no things over, now and again, I'll copy him on an email, our approachable chief of police, I had to wait two weeks for him to respond to an email asking for a meeting. You know, and I talked to George Merkel about this today because I don't want to be telling stories out of school, as they say, but I'm sharing with you my experience. I am a Virgens resident and all of what I have said is true.
Thank you, Catherine, we appreciate your view, it's, you know, it's nothing I've heard from about and I appreciate you being brave enough to say it tonight.
I do have one more thing to add, one of the reasons why I feel that there, one of the reasons why I feel there should be a, some sort of body, is that so people can be represented. I agree with the previous speaker that the complaints shouldn't go to the police department. And by the way, as I pointed out to George this morning, the button says contact the police, there's nothing about if you're uncomfortable with something in the city, contact us to tell us what's wrong. The Bixby Library has a great chat function now and maybe Virgens need a chat function, maybe we need to be a little more open. So anyway, that's that and I'm resigning from the committee. I have health concerns and I've put in what I can. And I'm not resigning because Jeff is no longer mayor, it has nothing to do with it. I decided today that in honor of my health, I would resign. So sometime if you're needing somebody to hand out ice cream cones, I might have a better experience.
Catherine, I'm very, very sorry that you feel you need to get down, but I understand health is important and I can absolutely understand why this has been stressful beyond what ordinary people can put up with, so thank you very much, I appreciate everything you did.
Lynn, it's partially because of you, you know, this meeting has been really ridiculous and so the vitriol on your face at city council meetings, talking about this committee, so I'm delighted you're mayor, I think it's great, you know, and I hope you're fair and welcoming to everybody. Thank you.
I can assure you I will be. Is there anyone else that'd like to say anything?
Theo Spencer.
Theo, are you available?
You know, they're blaming you, it's the mayor question.
Theo, are you there?
Thank you for letting me speak again, I wanted to make sure we had this important discussion about the committee and Catherine, I am heartbroken, you're stepping down, but I support you in making those decisions. I wanted to publicly address how disappointed and dismayed I was that Lynn, I know we talked about this offline, but I want to get it on the public record, that you encouraged everyone to come to your home, a private residence, without asking for RSVPs or trying to figure out some other solutions to participate in this meeting. I have been so proud of how Vermont has been handling this situation, it felt like we were able, with COVID, it feels like we were able to put politics aside and follow excellent guidance from our state health officials and from the governor. And there is a real reason why these meetings are being held online, it is for the safety of ourselves and for the safety of others. And I think it was really undermining this guidance and this decision to bring people into your home and throw such a wide net. All of us are finding creative solutions on how to stay connected, to be involved and have our voices heard during this time. Technology is not perfect, but there are many, many more resources on how we could have made sure everyone who wanted to be involved with this conversation were involved outside of inviting people into a private residence. So I just wanted to say that I hope as the mayor, we take this guidance extremely seriously and that we make decisions for the town that's based on science and that's based on health and not that's based on other reasons. And again, let's embrace new and creative solutions on how to move this town forward.
I appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Neil? I also want to get on the record that I have such an incredible amount of respect, I myself am close to tears hearing what Catherine had to say and the decision that she's had to make for her own health. This has been incredibly taxing, I end up speaking so much at these meetings, but anyone who knows me privately knows that I hate doing that, but I feel morally bound to sharing my thoughts as, in all honesty, as a representative of certainly my own views, but of others who perhaps don't feel able or confident to share their thoughts. I said, Neil, you can get over your issues because these things I know are important to share. So Catherine, thank you, I understand your decision 100% and I must echo that, as my partner will tell you, when I came home that day and I saw, a few days after the committee was assembled and I saw the "we support our local police" signs, the direct implication there being those people that are in this committee, those people that are having conversations about how do we do better as a community, do not support the local police. There is a direct line and people who disagree with that, I'm sorry that that's, that just simply is the case. When I came home that day, my partner will tell you that I really struggled to commit myself to this work, but then I remembered that this is exactly why this work is so critical and so important. When it comes to thinking about complaints, what we have in place right now simply is insufficient. I have had the chance to do a lot of study, you know, someone at yesterday's city council meeting, I was able to watch the video, talked about how we, you know, we've only had one complaint since, official complaint since Merkel has been in charge and, you know, again, like stuck record, it's not just about the past, it's not just about the present, it's about setting up a system for the future that serves this community in perpetuity. This is a volunteer organization, it has no effect on taxpayer money, it has no effect on resources, so that itself, you know, not only the exploratory group, but even what we might, we don't even know, we haven't given the chance to do that yet, what we might propose, there is no conversation about paying anyone to do this. So, I mean, that's just something that just bears repeating. And the one complaint, in fact, that was found to be not grounded in the past 11 years with the chief at the helm, as Catherine had to go through, right, that they were made to have a conversation with the chief, like all best practices point to that, not all best practices point to that not being the best practice. Uh, so I appreciate Daniel's effort to, uh, to set in place more systems, uh, for example, this sort of online button and things like that, but, uh, you, you need, you know, we have this for the water group and the pool and, you know, we have, we have groups of citizens serving in a capacity that makes our systems better. This, when it comes to literal life and death in the police department and how we're police as a community, this needs to be something as a community that we also are able to have a direct voice and say, uh, in, in, in serving as, as this group and to have citizen complaints be heard by peers, by citizens. That's what we do in the justice department, that's what we, that's what we prioritize in so many other, other systems. Why can't we do that with policing? And again, this Seguino report, you know, people have this, this view of it that, you know, as I said, said in the past, like I'm, I'm a statistician, I understand these things, I, I, I do this sort of work and there's nothing to suggest that the work that the professors did in the 2017 report is by any means flawed. Uh, what got me involved, uh, with energy in this conversation is when I heard the police's response to the Seguino report being the, the first thing that they did without, without, that he did, without reflecting at all about whether there is any potential of implicit bias within the Virgin's Police Department, which for people here, the 74 people here, for folks who don't know, Virgin's is at the bottom, all the way at the bottom of the list in the whole state of Vermont, when it comes to the percentage of black and brown people being pulled over on the basis of this report. The first thing that the police chief did was support, uh, a study to discredit the work of these professors. That was appalling. And that's what got me in this conversation. Uh, that, that was also tremendously embarrassing. Uh, and, you know, I, and I, I take this incredibly, incredibly personally. And to say that it doesn't happen in Virgin's is, is turning a blind eye to what is a national, if not international issue. I am, I am about the same age as, as Philando Castillo. Some of you might remember this name. I'm reminded that how at the age of 32, this man had been stopped 45 times in his car. 45 times. Because can anyone here share that experience or even come close to sharing that?
Why are they still letting him talk?
Sorry?
Okay.
45, I can't finish my, can I, I know I'm going long, but I feel like I need to.
Well, I just want to get you off so you could have your meeting. Are you still going to have that?
Yes, we will.
Okay. Well, I, I want everybody to have a chance, um, to express something.
A couple of that, so.
Yeah, we've only got 10 minutes left here. So, next, who is next?
Is there, is there anyone that doesn't know how to use the raise your hand function that wants to speak?
Am I being cut off? I'm happy to be cut off if that needs to be the case.
Well, I just was wondering if there's anyone else who wanted to speak. That's all. Now, I just, I'm just trying to give everybody a chance.
Lynn?
Yes?
This is Chief Merkel. I'd like to respond, please.
I haven't finished my thought.
Okay, go ahead, Niall.
Thank you. Again, Philando Castillo, and this is relevant. This is relevant to Virgin's. I'm sorry for those folks that don't think that it is. And, and 45 times this man was pulled over. And, and you know, some people, I don't think it's relevant and it shouldn't be relevant, but some people will bring this up. This man has no record whatsoever and was considered to be the Fred Rogers of his community. The 46th time this man was stopped, while his partner was sitting next to him and while his little kid was sitting behind him, he was shot four times just because he was following instructions. You can watch the recording if you're, if you're ready to do that. So this idea of this just doesn't happen here in Virgin's, the data is telling us that there is an issue here. And again, this is not an indictment of the police department. This is talking about implicit bias and we have an opportunity to do something about it, to have conversations about it. Do not rush this under the rug because God forbid, if something were to happen here in Virgin's, can we honestly face ourselves in the mirror and say that we did everything that we could to make this community the best community that it can be? Thank you for bearing with you, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Yes, ma'am. Um, first of all, there's, there's two pieces to my response. Whether the city council decides there is need for a citizen advisory board or not is, that's up to the city council. That's not my decision, that's the city council's decision. That's what they choose to do, that's fine. Um, Niall, um, I'm going to address this to you. I respect your opinion. I respect your right to have your opinion, but for you to say that I gave no thought to Professor Seguino's findings is unfair and a mischaracterization of the way I felt. Had I not paused, and that's putting it mildly, and took a step back and looked at what was going on, is an understatement. And I met, I met with Chief Jennifer Morrison of the Colchester Police Department and I met with Professor Seguino to discuss her findings. I also met with another statistician because I've said before, when we had our previous Zoom meeting, I am not a statistician. I have no, I, I do not know the mechanics of it. I don't have that capability, but I did refer to another statistician who did tell me it was flawed. And as I said to you, that's not for me to decide whether it's correct or incorrect because that's not my forte. But for you to say that I didn't give it some thought and didn't give it some consideration is incorrect. And you shouldn't have said that because that is incorrect. I very much care about the opinion of the people of Virgin's. And not only does that reflect upon the city that I love and I've protected for 10 and a half years, that reflects upon the men and women that work for me and I know their hearts and I know their capabilities. So that was incorrect. And I also want to tell you that because I have a passionate opinion, does that mean I'm not approachable? It doesn't mean I can't listen to people. I had a wonderful conversation with Catherine today and Catherine expressed her concerns and her, her feelings and the things that she's been through. And we had, by both accounts, a nice, nice conversation, which is the way things should be. There should not be contention or divisiveness, regardless of whether you can have a, you can have a difference of opinion and doesn't mean that we have to part ways at the end of our conversation, being at odds. So that, I mean, just, that's the first part. The second part is, we have not talked that much tonight about the position that the city manager was put in by the comments that were made. And the way the mayor, the previous mayor conducted himself and the comments he made about my department, I don't give a shit about the morale of the Virgin's Police Department. If I ever said that, I would expect to be resoundingly, um, dealt with and disciplined. And that shows an indication, or the lack thereof, of any concern for the employees that work for the city of Virgin's that go in day in and day out and, and risk their lives and put themselves in danger to protect the city. And I will tell you, there are many, many, many instances where these people have reached out to people of all colors and all choices in life and treat them with the utmost respect and courtesy. And we acknowledge what's going on around the country and we are vigilant about that. And I'm glad to have a conversation with anybody about that. But I will not, I will not let anybody make influence of Virgin's to make sure my officers are the best trained and they treat people with the utmost respect and courtesy. And while I may not be perfect at everything, I can tell you that these officers are top notch. And I welcome the opportunity to work with anybody who has a suggestion or a comment or complaint to make my department better and keep the city of Virgin's a wonderful place to live and work. And we do not need divisiveness. We mean, need objectiveness. And at the end of the day, we need to respect everybody's concerns and comments and beliefs. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? It's getting to be five minutes before the next meeting. Would anyone like to?
There's Kathy Ross here and then Judy Daniels.
Okay, Kathy, go ahead.
Let me unmute myself. Okay, so I wasn't even going to put my face on because the tear's been flowing. And I think I'm going to stop. So here we go. All I want to say is, I appreciate the younger generation that is here speaking. I am, you know, 65 years old, grew up here, love my city, but the people that are speaking right now are the people that are the younger generation that moved to this city because they love Virgin's and they want to make it better. So I am just applauding you all because most, the people who have spoken tonight are the younger generation. And I just want to say thank you very much because you are going to be the leaders, you are the leaders actually, and your voice tonight, I hope, is heard. Thank you, Neil. Thank you, Abby and David and, and Jeremy and Zoe and Sarah and, and all of you people that, all of you guys who are coming to Virgin's and, and have settled here because you love, you love this town and, and you want to stay here and you want to make this the best place because you could be anywhere else. And I so appreciate all your words. Catherine, I am sad that you are leaving, but anyway, thank you to this younger generation. That's all.
Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate that. Does anyone else like to speak before we, three minutes?
Alderman calling.
I thought there was somebody ahead of me. I just wanted to say when I declined to vote for Mayor Fritz, or Jeff Fritz resigning, it wasn't because I was in favor of what he said. I just felt that it happened so fast. I had no knowledge that this is what's coming and I would have preferred to have the council meet in a special session and executive to discuss personnel issues, um, as we've done in similar fashion. And I'm pretty sure I would have still, I would have voted for him to resign, but it just felt so fast and it's still just, uh, sitting on my chest. I, I thought we were going to be talking about the general idea of police, not Virgin's police, but police in general are an intimidating presence and it's hard to approach them when they have a taser and a gun and a bulletproof vest. And if you have a complaint or concern, it's difficult to, to walk up and say that. And that, that was where I thought this conversation was going to be about and, and the reason that the, the committee, to look for a committee, um, was under discussion. So I just wanted to clarify my position.
I appreciate that. But that's because you weren't attacked. So I understand where you're coming from.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah.
I, Mark, Mark, I, I agree. I, I didn't, I didn't see this, um, coming either. And the comments went up on the screen. Um, that's all I'm going to say. But I, 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 I agree with what Kathy said. You know, you younger folks, you, you moved here for a reason and, and I am very, very glad to see the involvement because you know what? I was young once. I wasn't and I'm not anymore, but I was young once and I remember, I remember what it was like, you know, as, as, as a young guy, um, who grew up here and came back here. And I'm not sure everybody realizes this, but I'm, I'm the guy that got a city council many years ago to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles an hour. Um, I'm the guy that when I was chair of the planning commission, fought to change the regulations to allow a more intensive type of development that has made our city what it is. I understand all about pushback and I'll give you my commitment that for as long as I'm here as an alderman, um, I'll, I'll make sure that your voices are, are heard. And I think what I'm hearing tonight is that there, there are, Catherine, you, you've spoken about some specific instances that, that you have experienced. That's unfortunate. It's unfortunate. I, I, I personally wish that you weren't resigning from this committee. I understand why you are. But I think what I'm hearing tonight, and, and, and I, I'd ask anyone in the last few minutes to chime in, I think what I'm hearing tonight is this, is that the, the issue is not specific to Virgin's Police Department, it is not specific to Chief Merkel or any of his officers. And if there's a situation, if, if, if the case is in Virgin's or anywhere else, that, that people don't feel safe, they don't feel that the police are, are approachable, that's a, that's a problem. You know what? I'm, I'm a 54-year-old white guy. I do not know the first thing about any of this. I, I don't, I, I don't understand, no matter how I try to understand it, I can't. But that doesn't mean, doesn't, doesn't mean that I don't understand that other people have to deal with that. And, 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 and so let's move forward from tonight and, and, and let's, let's, let's do everything that we can possibly do to make this a place where people don't have to feel like that, regardless of who you are, regardless of what color you are or everything. And, and I think a big part of that starts with open and honest communication. And that's the only thing that, that I, I am trying to do here. It's the only thing I'm trying to do. There, there are, are there people in this community that hold abhorrent views? Absolutely there are. And, and, and I don't have any tolerance for it at all. And so going forward, just do it. Do, do, let's just do the right thing going forward. And, and it's, this is not, this is not what this place is. This is not what it is. We're going to do better.
Anyone else have anything else? Thank you, David.
I would, I, if I have time, I really would like to address one more issue and that was the fact that, um, when the patrol box went off of mute while Neil was talking and the disdain and hurtful comment that came out by accident into this public meeting, while some of you guys are questioning why maybe we want to have this conversation and open more doors and I, shoot, I wonder what they're saying behind my back when the mute is not, when the mute is on. Um, I think it's really important to recognize that and we live in this strange day, strange day and age where we can mute and unmute and hear things by accident, but that might have been a little bit of a telling glimpse of what maybe some of us are feeling.
Thank you. Anyone else before we ask for an adjournment?
Good evening, Lynn. This is Mike Daniels.
Yes, hi, Michael. Hi.
Good evening. Thanks to get a word in edgewise. I just want to add some clarification. Catherine had mentioned a mayor that intimidated her. That, that was me and I didn't have any intentions to intimidate anybody during my office. I have a strong belief that, um, if you bring a problem to me, you should bring a solution with it. And that's what I was hoping is that that person or any person that came to me with the problem, they would have the working knowledge and give us the best guidance. I was looking for guidance. And so that, that's where that was. And again, it's unfortunate that she, uh, took it the way she did and didn't, you know, reach out and, uh, again, thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Can I say a word?
The, Ted, Teo, Teo Spencer has hand raised for a while. Teo, are you, can?
Yeah, sorry. Hi, sorry, I was disconnected before. I'll keep things short. I just wanted to say thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who has been working on this committee. And thank you to everybody who's on the city council. And I know things have been really difficult tonight. And I just, I want to say that I think that everyone is working towards something that's really important and to agree and support the idea of creation of a citizen review board. I also think that it could be really important for the future of Virgin's. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Teo.
Catherine?
We really need to, everybody's trying to get on to the other meeting, and there's some problems going on. Does anyone know why they can't get on?
It's because we're in this meeting, probably. The Catherine's hand raised. Catherine, do one, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike, for reaching out with that comment. I appreciate it. And I didn't mention that in, that I felt at time, there have been a couple of instances where I didn't feel heard by the police department. So I'm not singling out town managers and city council people. And I want you to know that in total, it was that. And that I incredibly, I appreciate all that everybody does. And thank you very much. And it was an honor to help in a little way. So thanks.
Okay, so there's other people trying to get into this meeting, and I'm getting messages that they are, so we need to.
That's the other, I don't see any more hand raised.
Okay. I want to thank everybody who came onto this meeting, all 75, I think there were of you. And I know we think we're coming from different directions, but I really don't think we are. I think that you're going to see a very united front, a more friendly, inviting communication system. And if anyone, if anyone wants to talk to any of us, we're available, but particularly to me. I know a lot of comments were directed at me, but also so were the threats. So with that, if I could have a motion to adjourn the meeting, I'd appreciate that.
I will make the motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Any comments? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And good night, everyone.
Thank you.